Everybody ready? All right, I call the meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Mike, can you help establish the quorum?
Yes. Trustee Brown?
Yeah.
Trustee Kobo Smith?
Here.
Trustee Dr. Lathan?
Here.
Vice President Rocha?
Here.
President Hernandez?
Here. All right, we have two items for closed session. We have item A, conference with labor negotiator, agency negotiator, Dr. Robert Martinez, district legal counsel, employer organization, California School Employees Association, chapter eighty-five, Antioch Education Association, and Antioch Management Association. And then item B, public employment interim superintendent. So we'll go ahead and go into closed session and return at 7:00 PM.
Do we need any of these?
No.
All right, I call the meeting back to order at 7:24. Maya, can you reestablish the quorum?
Yes, Trustee Brown.
Here.
Trustee Cobos Smith.
Here.
Trustee Dr. Lathan.
Here.
Vice President Rocha.
Here.
President Hernandez.
Here. Item B, reports from closed session, there are none. C, the flag salute. Vice President Rocha, will you lead us in the flag salute?
Sure, we shall stand. We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Justice for all.
Great. Moving on to item D, approval of board minutes for the regular Board of Education meeting of December 18th, 2024. Unless there's any discussion or changes, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I move to approve the minutes as presented. I second.
Great, so it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the Board of Education meeting minutes of December 18th, 2024. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say no, and the motion passes. Moving on to item four, superintendents' reports. Do we have a report from staff today? Great. Missy Barra.
Yes, good evening, Board. So I just wanted to say a few things. One, I want to start with the Deer Valley High School and Antioch Unified School District had the honor of hosting the Contra Costa County Secondary Special Olympics Basketball Tournament. Over 100 athletes hit the courts with style and skills showcasing their incredible talents and sportsmanship. It was an amazing day filled with the spirit of the Special Olympics oath. Let me win, but if I cannot win, let me be brave enough to attempt. This event was a resounding success thanks to the hard work of many dedicated individuals. A huge shout out to the Deer Valley Leadership Students for their exceptional efforts in officiating, emceeing, and coordinating the opening ceremony. Your leadership and dedication were truly inspirational, and thanks for all that made this event possible. I also would like to, we had a Martin Luther King contest every year that we hold annually. I wanted to acknowledge the students that won. For the 2025 Art and Essay winners, the high school art, first place, was Dozier-Libby Medical High Schools. I'm gonna mess up these names. They're beautiful names, but I'm gonna mess them up. Adelia Megar Portillo. Second place, Deer Valley High School Blake West. Third place, Antioch High School Callie West. Middle school art, first place, Park Middle Schools Bryce West. Middle school essay contest, first place winner, Dallas Ranch Middle Schools Noah Ivory. Elementary school essay, first place, Marsh Elementary was well represented, first, second, and third. So first was Johanna Wilson, second, Sion Tamikov Mikave, and Michelle Banks. And last, but not least, Reggie Moore Memorial Community Service Award, went to Deer Valley, or to Deer Valley High Schools Jayla Falls, Dallas Ranch Middle Schools Riley Wright, and Marsh Elementary Armin Bug. So I want to congratulate those students. And finally, a team of us attended the school specialties workshop at the governor's budget on January 21st. Better news than was expected, was heard, and presented, and we are looking forward to sharing this information at the upcoming special board meeting. That's all I have to report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Moving on to five school reports, we have the high school student representatives' report. So it looks like we have some, yeah, students from Antioch.
Yes.
Come up here and take.
I have great pleasure in welcoming Kailani Torres, Kelsey Gilbert, and Fafita Gru. Just talking to them in the audience, two of them are seniors, so we're gonna enjoy every bit of them while we have them for the next few months.
Can you hear me? Yeah, okay. Hi, everyone. As you may know, my name is Fafita Gru, and I am the Associated Student Body President at Antioch High.
Hi, everybody. My name's Kelsey Gilbert. I'm the Associated Student Body Vice President at Antioch High School.
And my name's Kailani Torres, and I'm the junior class president. It's been a fun and busy few months at Antioch High.
In December alone, we had three big events. Our cocoa and cram hosted more than 800 students. Leadership students served a pot chocolate and snacks to other students. The event serves to rally around freshmen as they take on their first round of finals, and staff are also on hand to offer support and studying tips and other help as well.
On December 13th, we held our annual winter ball, but this time we partnered with Deer Valley High and Dozier-Libby. The dance was held at the Antioch Community Center, and 300 students hit the dance floor in the photo booth and talked the night away. Everyone had a fun time, and we plan to join forces with those schools again.
On December 20th, our last day before winter break, we hosted our 10th Annual Warm for the Holidays event, serving more than 700 AUSD children, student, and family members. Students received new books, hoodies, toys and art supplies, pet supplies, groceries, and a visit from Santa. The AHS careers in teaching students did crafts, read and read books to the young visitors. More than 150 AHS student volunteers sorted, packed, and set up the thousands of items, all donated by local businesses, service organizations, community members, and alum for a total of $18,000 donated. Also, as we wrap up our winter sports, our girls soccer team and girls basketball team will be heading back to the playoffs this year.
Most recently, in honor of Martin Luther King Junior Holiday, students and staff participated in a multi-site day of service on January 20th. In partnership with Antioch Parks and Rec, we helped at three city locations. At Antioch, at Fremont Elementary, students added some colorful flair to our favorite play area, put fresh ground cover and three lunch spots, and painted three benches. Earlier in the month, the 10-year-old seats were sanded and repaired by Antioch High School's woodshop students, and another group did some beautification to the Antioch Community Park.
The Antioch High Orchestra and our interact club were at the senior center, Antioch Senior Center, and engaged with the senior citizens there and did some art projects with them. Like Missy Barra mentioned, our Panthers also recently participated in the Contra Costa County Secondary Special Olympics Basketball Tournament with more than 100 local athletes and showcased their skills and sportsmanship. It was, it was an amazing day filled with the spirit of the Olympics oath. Let me win, but if I cannot win, let me be brave in the attempt. Also, this year, we brought back our unified sports, which included soccer and bowling.
Coming up, we have two, uh, two events coming up. Two Black History Month assemblies planned in February and a multicultural rally in March. In March, we also will be hosting a song for Caesar Chavez in honor of him. That will be open to all AUSD students and families.
For students peer intervention, educators will lead the training with the County 2P, which is our Tobacco Use Prevention Education Program. Teachers during a woodshop in mid-February.
And lastly, our lean crew and student gov students are working with the East Bay Regional Parks to become instructors to train other students to be CPR certified. Thank you all for your time. Have a great rest of your night.
Yeah, Trustee Lathan.
So I just wanted to say hello to all the young ladies. We're leaving. Kailani and Fafita, I've met personally. They were two young ladies who were on our Equity Board Committee, and you all have left a lasting impression with me. They gave examples of their experiences in schools in really innovative ways that the adults can think about how to kind of mediate some of those challenges at their schools, at their school. And so I just wanted to say thank you, and thank you too for coming. You all did a wonderful job, and I'm very proud of you.
Great. Moving on to six public comments. Six A, individuals to address the board regarding items not on the agenda from the public. First, we have Nicole Arrington.
Hello. Unfortunately, the last time I was here, I was here for a different fight, but this time, I'm actually here for my granddaughter because we received a phone call from Ms. Berry's office from Thomas Gaines Virtual Academy. She called the wrong student, needless to say, but her reason for the call was because she tried to say the child was home alone, which, not quite sure how you would know that. She stated she was chatting with the child in teams, which, again, not quite sure why she'd be chatting with a student in teams when the student should be in class. So that's a little alarming to me. And then, I thought my granddaughter's name was pretty, I don't know, unique, but turns out there's six different children with the same name at the school. So they called the wrong one, needless to say. She basically was rude and unprofessional to my daughter, whom she knows because my daughter's on the school oversight board with her. So she was calling her a liar and just, you know, being disrespectful. So basically, I took over the phone call. When I spoke with the assistant, Ingrid, she told me that I apologized that we called the wrong home. And I said, okay, that's great, and all, but my point is the way she is interacting with the parent is unacceptable. She needs to apologize. She needs to be held accountable, and she thought that was funny. So I said, apparently, you don't know who I am, but I'm gonna let you know. I'm Nicole Arrington. You might want to look me up. I'm coming up to this school all the time because I'm up there picking up my granddaughter's packets. So I'm not somebody who's just not gonna say anything or go away. And if you're speaking in the manner that you're speaking to my daughter, which is someone you know, then how are you speaking to other parents of other students at that school that you don't know? And the fact that she wanted to weaponize APD, saying she was gonna send them over to our house, is unacceptable. So I told her, well, I can call the chief since I know him if that's what you want to do. And then, of course, it's like, well, no, we don't want to do that. Well, I bet you don't. But you probably shouldn't talk to people that way. There's a way to go about things, and that's not the way to do it. Regardless whether the child was home alone or not, California state law, there is no age limit of a child to be home alone, just so everyone knows for the record. You can look it up. So even if the child was home alone, if they are safe, their environment is safe, then there's no problem. But again, don't know how you can even say you knew the child was home alone. So my thing is, is Ms. Berry needs to call my daughter, which she still has not, and apologize because she not only wouldn't take responsibility, get on the phone, she's talking through her assistant and making her assistant speak and being like.
Thank you. Next, we have Patricia Granados.
Hello. Happy Wednesday. My name is Patricia Granados. I'm excited for the new school year. Leadership, I'm sure great things are coming. Equity, equality, social justice, accountability. It's really disappointing to hear this kind of trauma and disruption into a family unit, and I'm sure that the little one was traumatized hearing the commotion. But we did have terrible leadership, and I'm thankful that we, y'all fired former superintendent Stephanie Anello. She needed to go because that toxic environment resulted in the school district, AUSD, weaponizing the police and serving, here's a pack of 15 restraining orders. And by the names, they're, I would just make the assumption that they're either Latino or of African-American descent. So I would like to leave this with you, Board President, or anyone here, just for record. I have a digital copy that I will be sharing also because weaponizing the police against families is unacceptable. The police here violated human and civil rights for many years. We will never know the amount, and the trials are supposed to start soon. So hopefully, there's accountability all the way across. And just because you back the blue, just because you back the blue, Velma Wilson, it is not okay to criminalize children and continue the school-to-prison pipeline. It's unacceptable. And then to have liaisons here for the end-of-year report from 2022 to 2023, it's three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, nine bullets of information for a $10,000 contract is ridiculous. We need to raise the standards because when you are a liaison, you would assume that you want to talk to and communicate and bring the community and families together, but for an average parent attendance being 42, there's more than 42 parents in the school district. And if that's your average for these liaison meetings, then that's a Mickey Mouse show, and we need to raise those standards or just hire someone else. So if we do, if you are looking into hiring more police officers, which I did see in a former meeting, please hire more counselors, counselors for the children, counselors to heal, because there's trauma that's still here. Victims whose children are still students here in the school district. It's unacceptable. So please address this. We want counselors, not cops, until they are held accountable and until they raise the standards of the work ethics that they're supposed to do. Also, I would love for us to get a refund. If we can get the former superintendent Stephanie Anello's pension, her former salary, over a quarter million a year plus, I think it was 300 or something, I would like a refund and give that back to the community by means of getting into her stock, give it back to the school, because that quality of education is an embarrassment, and if they fail, she failed many students and families here in the school district and in Antioch. Thank you.
Thank you. You can leave any documents over here with Maya. Next, we have Velma Wilson.
Good evening, Board. It's nice to see you. Happy New Year, Happy Kwanzaa, all of that, since I wasn't able to attend the meeting prior. Dr. King once said, "Education which stops with efficiency may prove the greatest menace to society." Thank you to Mary Rocha for intentionally making an effort to support our Antioch Unified School District's Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Celebration. A salute to greatness, the mission possible, protecting our freedom, justice, and democracy. We had young people from most all of our schools who represented in a salute to greatness during the waltz. Seeing students dressed in white ball gowns and boys in tuxedos with tails and portraying iconic figures of history was nothing short of amazing. Unfortunately, we lost our sound and sound system, but thank you to Director Wisely for stepping up, and this should never happen again at such a nice and prestigious event. The room was filled with community, showing community, loving community, cohesively enjoying a show worthy of a king. cohesively enjoying a show worthy of a king. Coming up, we have our annual Black History Month Celebration on February 21st. It will be at the historic Antioch High School BD Auditorium. We have Bay Area's finest, young, gifted, and black out of the city of Oakland coming to grace our stage for the first time portraying and doing what they do best, spoken word. We also are looking to have Audio Pharmacy out of San Francisco. That is a huge feat, but it is possible. Come out and celebrate with our students, our performers, and everyone that pours their heart and soul into making this an event worthy of what AUSD stands for. We are AUSD. We do salute excellence. We do, are proud of the work of our diversity within this district. Do we need to do better? Absolutely. Absolutely. We have a lot to do and a lot to, to, to look forward to. But I really want to thank each and every last one that came out to support. There's a couple of community forums that are coming up to talk about the African-American holistic hub. Please make sure you go to one of those forums. One I do know is on, that's going to be hosted by our county supervisor, Diane Burgess. One that will be hosted at Genesis Church, and I do believe there's another one at Delta Bay. Make sure you come and be a voice so we can make sure we're spending our money.
Thank you. Uh, next, we have Dr. Peyton.
Good evening, Board. I just wanted to come today because I've been disheartened as I, um, I know that everybody in AUSD is doing a good job working with our scholars, trying to keep them educated, trying to keep the staff prepared to educate and with the resources they need. But it's a little disturbing when parents, um, have approached me for support to be a liaison because they're fearful of talking to their child's teacher and to their child's principal. There are students in this district that are suffering because, for some reason, at certain sites, and I'm not gonna get into those sites, but if you go to CDE's site on your, uh, suspension rate, those are the sites where African-Americans, the rate has significantly increased, where it is maintained. African-Americans are one of the few groups of students that have not significantly went down in this district. But going back to those school sites, at those sites, some parents are threatened, some students are threatened. Some students are threatened with, if they have their hand in their pocket, their teachers claim that they're doing things inappropriate from elementary on up. That's not right. They're, they're making it more criminal, so they're preparing the way it looks for a school-to-prison pipeline. That's not okay. I, I really need this board to pay attention to what's happening with the suspensions. I know that you have a lot on your plate, but the reasons why special needs students are being denied services and the reason why suspensions are happening are because there's unfair practice and bias going on. And it's the same teachers, the same schools, and the same principals in every instance. It's no different. You have some wonderful teachers on site and some wonderful principals, but the ones that are still in existence that can't turn the mindset aloose are doing harm. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next, we have Devin Williams.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, Devin Williams. Phew, just ran to my car. Forgot my flyers. How are you all doing tonight, community, staff, and board? My name's Devin Williams. I work for Lift Up Contra Costa. And, um, for those who don't know what Lift Up Contra Costa is, it is a, a community nonprofit throughout the county. Whew. We have, we are a seven-partner civic engagement table, and our mission is to uplift the voices of those underserved in our county. Mostly, my work is focused in, um, East County, Pittsburgh, and Antioch. Um, we have been partnering with the Bridge Builders Program to, um, excuse me, to, um, have our youth go out in the communities and promote, um, emergency preparedness awareness, um, through the Ready Rep Program, which is a government-funded program through Cal OES. And so what we do is, um, we've been hosting events in the community, letting our neighbors know what they, what steps they need to take to be prepared in the case of a natural disaster. And we're seeing, you know, more and more wildfires throughout California. And so we want our communities to, um, be prepared and, um, we're disseminating information, which I do have here, if any audience is interested in, um, learning about the program. I have flyers. I'll be here the whole night, uh, most of it, anyway. Um, we'll be hosting an event on February 22nd at, uh, Delta Bay Community Church, and this will be our, um, hopefully, one-hundred-plus-person summit, uh, where we're doing workshops and, uh, pro, uh, presentations on, uh, the Ready Rep Program. And so, um, also, I like to say that, um, part of, another part of my work is doing, uh, social justice and community work. Uh, we're many hats in the community. I'm also the vice chair of the Antioch Police Oversight Commission. And those of you, uh, who know, we are advocating to have an African-American holistic wellness hub in the city of Antioch, and so we'll be hosting an event, um, on February 12th at the Delta Bay Community Church from six to eight. So if you're interested in that, I'll be here for that information as well. Um, also, there's one more thing I want to talk about. Yeah, I was thinking, um, because of, as a community member, working with the youth and things like that, I really hope that this board can, um, find, uh, ways to engage our youth in, um, proactive activities, um, and, and boost those, like, reading levels and things like that, um, as well as collaborating with, um, the Oversight Commission, Police Oversight Commission, and APD as we rebuild our police department. Um, those things can look like, um, community engagement opportunities, like youth basketball, but, um, or baseball, um, uh, town halls to learn about how the in, in and out of the community policing, um, can be. That, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm out of breath. Um, so yeah, uh, I, I hope that we can, uh, work in collaboration together. Um, hopefully, my vice chair, uh, my chair doesn't kill me for saying that out loud. But, uh, yeah, so that's, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to six B, individuals to address the board regarding items not on the agenda from district employees. Uh, we have none. Uh, moving on to seven, district reports, uh, we'll start with item A, uh, district financial audit for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2024.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. Um, first of all, I want to applaud Mia and, um, the fiscal staff um, for doing such a hard, uh, outstanding job and working hard every day to make sure that our books and everything, um, is appropriately accounted for. Um, we have our independent auditor, uh, Charles Ray Rably from Crow LLP that will come up and give a presentation. Um, so for the item A is the district financial audit, so that's the audit on, on the district books. And then he'll also present on, um, item B, which is the Measure C, um, bond and the fi, financial statements and the performance audits related to the Measure C, which is our previous bond, not our current bond that we just passed.
Good evening. Thank you very much for the opportunity to come and speak with you. Uh, I'll give a little bit of a highlight about the scope of the audit, um, what our objectives are, and then talk about some of the results for the district audit. And then, um, I don't know if you need to take any action on the, okay. Well, then we'll talk about Measure C general obligation bonds as well. So, uh, the annual external financial audit is required by Education Code. Uh, it's required for you to have an, um, a financial audit for the district's overall financials, the government-wide financial statements, as well as a federal compliance audit required by the Uniform Guidance, uh, and then a state compliance audit, because you're here in the state of California. There's a lot of, obviously, the Education Code requirements. A number of those are separately audited by us as part of, um, the Education Code requires them to be audited as part of the state awards audit. I don't know if you wanted to bring up one page in the audit report, uh, on the screen just because it's a nice summary. You have it on your electronic version in front of you, which is page ninety-two of the PDF document. Um, this is what's called the summary of auditor's results. So I'll just give you a second there. Um, while, while that's getting pulled up, I'll talk a little bit about, um, sort of the timeline of our audit. Uh, we typically start the audit process in the spring, um, and conduct, uh, our state compliance, federal compliance, reestablishing our understanding of what are the internal controls that are in place to generate your financial statements. And then, over the summer, our team reviews the work that's been done. Um, and then, uh, leading into the end of your fiscal year, after you close the books and produce the unaudited actuals, then we come in and look at the end numbers, right? So making sure that the, the dollar amounts presented in the financial statements are accurate, that they're complete, and then produce the ultimate document before you, which is the audit report. And that is then, uh, our objective, our goal, is to submit that to the State Controller's Office uh, by the deadline that's set by Education Code, which is December 15th of the year following the fiscal year end. So in this case, the December 15th landed on a Sunday, so December 16th, right? So, uh, and I'm thankful to say that this year's audit was, uh, submitted on time with the State Controller's Office, um, by the December 15 deadline. Um, we gave, um, and I'll just go ahead and talk about these. So we gave, on the financial statement audit, we gave what's called an unmodified opinion. Unmodified is the highest level of assurance you can get out of an external financial audit. So that's where you want to be, clean audit. We did not identify any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. Um, and there were no non-compliance items that we identified in our, um, financial audit, okay? So for the financial statements, no compliance issues. The federal audit, which is, um, again, that required by the federal government to have your programs audited on a rotational basis. Uh, this year, we audited two programs, the COVID-19, uh, related programs for the, um, they call it the ESF program, but you might hear it more commonly called the Esser or Gear Dollars. Uh, and then we also audited the special education cluster of programs. And so we gave an unmodified opinion over that as well. So that's, um, where you want to be, clean audit for that. And then, again, for the state awards audit, uh, we also gave an unmodified opinion over that as well. And that, um, is where you want to be for that. And so there's, there's about thirty different areas that we have to audit for the state compliance, um, audit. And I will say that of those thirty, we had two minor compliance items that we had identified. I'm sure you guys jumped to the back of the report and looked for those audit findings. You'll notice that in our audit opinion, or on that page that I referenced about the summary, I said it was an unmodified opinion for state awards. That's because we had two findings that we identified, but they were very minor with no fiscal impact, so it didn't affect our audit opinion, okay? So, but the state, uh, if you want to go to page ninety-two, sorry, of the PDF. Yeah. So this is what I was referring to in, in my discussion, is there's three sections. In the bold, all-caps font section, uh, financial statements, unmodified, and then federal awards, unmodified, and then at the very bottom, state awards, unmodified. All real exciting stuff for auditors and accountants, maybe a little dry for everyone else. The, uh, two findings that were identified, you know, the, the state audit guide basically is very simple in that it is, if it is something we identified, we have to include it, even if it doesn't have a fiscal impact. So I always make that clear, clear as to why we have included this. It's because the state audit guide says we have to. So in the case of, we had a, a one attendance item that we had identified in our testing, the equivalent ADA represented by that was point zero one ADA, so not a whole lot relative to the district's attendance. And then we had one after-school, uh, education program count, right? Of somebody attending that, we had the sample, uh, that we took of, um, all the counts that, at various sites, and we had one, um, uh, attendance count that was different than what was reported, okay? So, again, not a, a significant component from a fiscal impact by any means, but required to be included. So we have it here, okay? Is there any questions that you may have about the audit report or that, um, you want any other information on that? Um, I'll talk a little bit, and then I'll, in that, in that, uh, case, I'll just go ahead and talk a little bit about the Measure C general obligation bonds. At a very high level, um, there was not a lot going on this fiscal year for Measure C. Had about fifteen thousand in expenditures, and we tested seven thousand of that by looking at supporting documentation such as a warrant, invoice from a vendor, uh, purchase order, et cetera, and had no issues with that. It was a, an unmodified opinion again for, for the, uh, per Measure C audit. And so, again, looking at that is required by the, uh, Education Code and by Proposition 39. And, um, so welcome any questions on that. It was about fifty percent of the total expenditures.
Great. So, yeah, any questions? That's both item A and, uh, item B on here.
Okay. I appreciate your time very much. I think the fact that we have these unmodified opinions really speaks to management, um, and, and their efforts to get us what we needed. Had other conversations this year that are a little longer and a little longer pages in the audit report for findings. So I really think that, um, that goes back to, uh, the fiscal team and everybody else that was involved in the audit and being able to get us what we needed, and it was correct. So appreciate that very much. Uh, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And then, again, thank you to all of our staff for all the support on that. Uh, moving on to eight hearings, there are none. Uh, item nine, public presentations, there are none. Um, and then consent items, uh, do we have any items on the consent calendar that we need to either discuss separately or potentially pull for a separate vote? Yes, Trustee Lathan.
Um, I just have two that I wanted to, uh, share, um, or have questions about. One is ten X and Y. Um, I'm sure that's Ms. Carrie Wells. Um, but, but just, we have ten classified staff and one certificated staff resigning. Um, and I know last school year, we talked about, and you all shared data about why folks resigned. Um, and so just wanted to know if we are still on that same path.
Yes. So, um, every employee who, um, resigns is, um, asked to complete a survey for Human Resources. Um, it is an optional survey that they can complete. Um, they can share as much detail or as little detail as they would like about the reasons for their resignation. And then they do also have the option, um, for, uh, either an in-person conversation with a respective HR representative, whether that's classified or certificated, or a phone call. Um, sometimes we do have, you know, people who are resigning share with us in that survey. Sometimes they just fill out the basic information. Um, I haven't had, and, and then the respective, um, managers, myself, Dr. Martinez, our director, De'Twon Button, um, do review those surveys, um, each time they come in. So we get alerted every time an employee who resigns completes that survey so that we can automatically look at the results and see if, you know, we should be reaching out to that employee. Yeah.
Thank you. I think about culture, like district culture, like this is important. And as we are, you know, doing, getting ready to, um, go through the search process for a superintendent, I think it'll be good for that person to know too, like the things that are working really well and then things that may be a challenge. So thank you for that.
Absolutely. And, um, I'll continue to, um, work with Dr. Martinez and Director Button and, um, maybe gather some categorical information to kind of help with that as well.
Mm-hmm. And then lastly, ten DD. Um, D as in dog, D as in dog. Um, it's a service agreement with Peer Advocates Training and Consulting for Antioch High School. And I just wanted to, um, commend Antioch High School. We're taking steps to empower their students as leaders. I read over the contract. Um, is, we, a, a, a community member said earlier, we do have very high suspension rates and expulsion rates comparative to the county and state. Um, and so moving from student referrals and suspensions and exp, expulsions to really empowering our students to understand and to practice, um, you know, strong leadership and how to do, uh, resolution, conflict resolution is important. So just wanted to make that comment.
There's not any...
I just have something.
Yeah.
Uh, on I and J, and it has nothing to do with the AVAC that's going in there, HVAC. But I'm glad that we're having it because it's, it's so overheated when trying to watch the games and being in there, we're suffocating.
Can I read what the...
But, okay, it's a change order on the, uh, oh, excuse me. Change order for the, um, mechanical of Antioch High School gym, uh, gym, HVAC project, which is the air conditioning, that's all it is. But we're finally getting a change. But what I wanted to make sure is, I have already cleared it. I want to make sure that the people understand that the panther that was written on the side, the painting that was done on the side of that wall that was paid for by the community is going to be replaced so that people understand that we're not losing it because I've had some questions on it. That's why I brought it up, not on the issue. Thank you.
Then, uh, unless there's more items, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar, items A through E E.
I move approval.
Great. So it's been properly moved. Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Great, so it's been properly moved and seconded to approve all the items on the consent calendar, items A through EE. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. And the motion passes. Moving on to 11 action items, we have action item A, Board of Education meeting dates for the 2025, 2026 school year. So here are all the dates that we're going to meet for the upcoming year. Is there any questions or, yes, Trustee Lathan?
Thank you. Item 11A, Board Education meeting dates for 25, 26 school year. There are two back-to-back meetings in June, one, so one week apart, one meeting June 10th and one meeting June 17th. Typically, we meet every other week, and so I didn't know if it should be June 3rd and 17th, or if, or if it was a reason for that. I can do either, but yeah, I was just wondering.
I'll speak to that. So it's, in June, we have to have a public hearing for the ALCAP and the budget, and then an approval. And oftentimes, so we usually meet the second of, the second week of June so that we have, we have time to do the budget and complete the budget. But this year, we did do it two weeks later, but that falls close to like the Fourth of July, and people are leaving for vacations. And so most districts do back-to-back, so we do the public hearing and then we do the approval. So it was intended to be like that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Unless there's any other questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the board meeting schedule as presented.
Move approval.
Great, so it's been properly moved. Is there a second?
A second.
Great, so it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the 2025, 2026 board meeting schedule as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say no. And the motion passes. Moving on to item 11B, we do have a public comment for item 11B from Devin Williams.
I'm actually not out of breath now. Good evening, everyone, once again. Devin Williams here. I just wanted to thank you all for taking on this studious work that you're doing and finding a new superintendent representative for our district. And, you know, I just wanted to implore that you guys really make the best decisions on who you bring on to represent our school district and our students and our families, because we do need a change in the city of Antioch and our school systems. I would go as far as to say that this is the most essential part of our community, and I know all of you know that. And I hope that your guidance and your collaboration with each other and collaboration with the communities input can really grant someone that position to do the best that's for our students and our families and our, just our city as a whole. Let's make Antioch the city that is growing in thought and creativity and progress. And let's open up some of those doors for people coming up behind us all. And hopefully, we can hire a superintendent that represents that. I would, I mean, this is a little unorthodox, but I would say it's Dr. Jag. I mean, the opportunity is there. I mean, hey, I think you, I think you would do an excellent job at this, and I don't know, that's out of line, but that's just my thoughts personally. And that's all I wanted to say tonight, is thank you guys for the search and whoever else is involved. And just, yes, use your, your wise decision-making skills that you all have. Thank you.
And then we do have another comment for 11B, Patricia Granados.
I saw the temporary interim that's coming in, and I saw a post from the local blog, and he's already getting attacked. And it's the usual, but I, I'm hopeful that whoever this leader is, that he has experience, he can identify with our community. And anything will be better than what we had before, to be honest, because leadership matters, decision-making matters, and understanding your community, and setting policies and procedures, and following them, some ethical standards for our babies. So thank you all for doing this. I trust that you all make a right, a good decision for our kids, for the families, to stop getting criminalized, to be understanding of our environment that we're in, because we are products of the system. The system that has oppressed, marginalized, discriminated against, especially African-American community members and beyond. But it's, it affects everybody because it's supremacism, it's classism. So I'm excited. We're going to go beyond that. We're going to come at, hopefully, from a holistic perspective and the right leader for our parents and our children and our teachers and our amazing staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Great. So yeah, so this item is the contract that we discussed at our last special board meeting, where we selected McPherson and Jacobson to be the firm that's going to help us search for the permanent superintendent. I don't know if staff has additional contacts to share besides that? No? Great. So unless there's any discussion or anything else we need to talk about, I'll entertain a motion to approve the contract as presented.
I move approval of the Ferson and Jag Gibson for the superintendent search.
Great, so it's been properly moved. Is there a second?
A second.
Great, so it's been properly moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say no. And, okay, let's go ahead and do a roll call vote then, just to be clear.
Trustee Brown. Trustee Kobo Smith.
Yes.
Trustee Dr. Lathan.
Yes.
Vice President Rocha.
Yes.
President Hernandez.
Yes. So that motion passes 4-1 with Trustee Brown, the no vote. Moving on to C, we have the discussion and approval of the interim superintendent contract. So similarly, we did discuss this at our last special board meeting, and this is the contract that we do have to approve, that at a regular board meeting can, cannot approve during a special board meeting, so that's why that's coming back to us in this form. Is there any discussion or comments or a motion?
Oh, I'll move the, let's put the item on. I move approval of the item, but I'm also making sure that the public understands that we're going to strive very hard to review the conduct of this superintendent, this acting superintendent. We have a contract that has 14 days on it, and we are sure as a board members that we will be on top of it, and so that public is aware that, we know that there's some issues that have been brought up to us, but that we want to work with the community as well.
And I'll go ahead and second that motion, and it probably looks like we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote.
Trustee Brown. Trustee Kobo Smith.
Yes.
Trustee Dr. Lathan.
No.
Vice President Rocha.
Yes.
President Hernandez.
Yes. So that motion passes 3-2 with Trustee Brown and Trustee Lathan voting no. Moving on to D, we have the revised one classified management and one classified CSA job description. So I'll go ahead and turn it over to Ms. Wells.
Thank you. So as you know, pursuant to Personnel Commission rules, the personnel director is required to review job descriptions, and these two classifications, which do exist, have been reviewed by the director. And basically, the two changes that you see are updates to reporting structure in that the title of the supervisor aligns with the title that we have in the district. So for example, on the technology technician, we don't actually have someone called the manager of technology. His position, Mr. Lindquist, is the director of information technology. So it's just an alignment with the positions that we have in the district in terms of supervision and the job description. And then I think we had one little update, bringing us up to 2025 modems, no longer, but we did add in projectors, because we do have projectors in all of our school sites. So little bit of technology update there as well. So the, the request is for approval.
Great. So is there any questions on this? Otherwise?
I do have a question.
Yes, Trustee Lathan.
I think you said it, Ms. Wells, but I want to clarify. So the technology technician, we're just changing, so instead of manager of technology, it's director of information technology. Is there any change in classification or pay, pay scale thing? No?
No. No change in pay structure. To go back to the commission, no, no other changes other than the alignment of terminology for the person who oversees.
Perfect. Thank you.
And that's the case for both of the job descriptions.
Any other questions? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to approve the revisions to the classified job descriptions.
I move to approve.
Second.
Great, so it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the revisions to the CSA classified job description, technology technician, and to the classified management position, supervisor, vehicle, and equipment maintenance. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say no. And the motion passes. Moving on to E, reinstated classified management position and revision of the director facilities job description. So I'll turn it back over to Ms. Wells.
Yes, so in order to best serve the district, this classified management position is being asked and requested of the board tonight to be reinstated to help the district achieve its goals necessary to serve students, employees, and the community. The district has not utilized this position since March of 2020, and the reason for that is this position is directly related to the bond. So our previous bond, Measure C, this was the last time that we utilized this position, and now that we have passed Measure B, we do have the need for this again, to oversee the facilitation and structure and implementation of that bond. It is a big undertaking, but it is amazing for our schools and our community. And I do want to also iterate to the board that this is funded out of the bond measure, so that this is not coming out of your general fund or other categorical monies. This is directly funded with the bond, so it's a request for reinstatement.
Any questions?
I move approval.
Great, so it's been moved. Is there a second?
A second.
Great, so it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the reinstatement of the director facilities classification and accept the revisions to the job description. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say no. And the motion passes. Moving on to item F, the 2024, 2027 Expanded Learning Opportunities Program Plan.
I would like to welcome up Director Ed Dacus. He has a brief presentation to share with you, and he will go over the details of the plan.
Good evening, Board of Education. Brought to you this evening is our revised or reviewed Expanded Learning Opportunities Program Plan. California education code requires that our plan be reviewed and adopted by our Board of Education every three years, so we are in year three. So that's why you'll see the date span there from '24 to '27. There we go. So just some kind of descriptors. The ELO program plan refers to our programs that are outside of the regular school day, so these are our after-school programs. The Expanded Learning Program is not meant to be an extension of the instructional day, but rather an opportunity to provide structured, high-interest, and structured, high-interest activities for kids in a, in a safe place. Jumping forward on me, sorry about that. Just once again, all school districts in California are obligated to provide an Expanded Learning Program. And this really constitutes 15 hours of additional opportunity time during the week. So for Antioch Unified, from our dismissal time until 6 o'clock at night, we provide our programs. In addition to this, we provide 30 days outside of the school year, so we have a five-day fall intercession, a five-day spring intercession, and then a 20-day summer intercession as part of our Expanded Learning Program. The plan that you have before you addresses these required 12 quality standards that address both point-of-service elements as well as programmatic elements to ensure that, and these are put in place through the statutes, to ensure that we're providing the adequate services and, and also management as well as the sustainability of our program. We continue to have a partnership with Bay Area Community Resources, or BACR. They provide the day-to-day program for our after-school programs. Our site staff, particularly our vice principals, work directly with the BACR staff to ensure that we have a seamless transition from school day into Expanded Learning. Our vice principals are also there to help oversee the day-to-day operations of, of the after-school programs. During this time after school, the bulk of the time, students have an opportunity to participate in this, what BACR likes to refer to as the community and team building. This can include arts projects, STEM activities, lots of recreation and structured play. Students also have an opportunity to get a meal and snacks. We like to feed our kids. And then we also provide a structured time during that, during their after-school period where they can take care of any homework that they may have. The other thing that BACR is very passionate about and we fully support is they like to have group and family activities. So BACR, I know, has, has extended invitations to some of the programs that they'll do. They have cooking things at some, at cooking activities at park, and they like to have a little restaurant, and they'll invite people out to have a meal. They do art shows and other types of performances, so they're very keen in providing that to our families. BACR also likes to take our after-school programs and integrate it into the site's open houses and their back-to-school nights, so that this program is really part of the overall program at the school. And then we, we support our program through basically two, three funding sources. The first is the Expanded Learning Opportunities Program funding. This is state funding. It's ongoing, and we provide a program at all of our elementary sites with in-person instruction for TK through sixth grade. For our middle schools, in our high school, one high school, we have federal grants, they're three-year grants, the ACIS grant and the ASSETS grant, structured very similarly. The ACIS grant also helps support some of our elementaries. These two federal grants are granted primarily based on your unduplicated count percentages. So every time we have a school that gets close to that threshold of 70%, we make an application. And in the last three years, or two years, we've actually added three kids, three, three sites to the ACIS grant for, on the elementary side. And Antioch High School is the one high school that we have that's running an after-school program. For our sites that don't have a program, it's because they haven't met that threshold, but every year, I'm applying for them, so we can hopefully get them programmed as well. So we're asking for approval of our plan this evening.
Of course.
Was it?
Great. Any questions? Trustee Brown.
Yes, I do have a question.
Okay.
So I just want to make sure that I'm understanding clearly. So you're a part of BASCR, or you're representing them?
No, I'm, I'm a director for program support for the district, and I work with BACR as our partner. So they run our programs, and then I'm the, I'm the district oversight.
Okay. Is there any other competitors? Is, I mean, any other companies that you guys look at, or is it just BASCR?
We've had a longstanding relationship with BACR. There are others out there, but not, that don't, they don't offer the breadth that BACR does. They're, they're fairly large, and they're able to handle a district our size.
Okay. And then my other question, do you know what their TK to staff ratio is?
Ten to one.
And do you know their data as far as how many incident reports they had and how was, how many injury and incident reports? How are they looking on that?
I do not have that. I can get that. They do have a protocol for that. But normally, if there's something major, if someone fell and hurt themselves, they would give me a call. I'd be part of that communication train, and I haven't had anything from them in probably two years.
So no incidents?
I'm not, I'm not saying there are not bumps and bruises.
You're exactly on major.
I'm, nothing that, that has come across major, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
No, I was just going to say, you might want to explain that we originally had the city of Antioch, and then we moved on and had an open bids, and then this program came in.
True. Predated me.
That's way back.
Yeah, that way back.
So when this comes up, there is a bid part on this every so often.
There, yes, there can be, yeah, yeah.
That's, I mean, because it's just information that we need to share.
Yes, we've been very Yes, we've been very satisfied with the service level. We have a very collaborative relationship with their management team, and they're always looking to, you know, expand what can we do to provide. A lot of what they do is student-centered. They survey their kids, they survey their families, so that there's options. It's not the same thing every single day, but they mix things up. The middle school level is a little bit tougher because those kids are more independent. They really don't want to stay after school. They want to go home, but trying to make sure they've got engaging things for those kids to stay and do, so.
And Trustee Lathan?
Yeah, I think for the future, for the presentation, and hopefully for other presentations when we're working with outside providers, but also just even when it's internal, if we could get numbers, like how many students are in the program, what is the impact, you know, like at some point, like what is the impact and connected to their school learning? Like, are these students more likely to attend school every day? Do they have higher attendance than students who don't? So just more data, so we can understand like the, like the impact of what we're paying for, but then also what is really understanding, how it's changing the lives of students or not.
Any other questions, comments? Otherwise, the only question I had is just a little bit more clarity on the funding and I guess grant timelines. Like, I guess, like, my understanding is like, in these three years that these grants last, is this something that we continue to reapply for these grants, or do we have to then look at what it's going to cost to maybe sustain what we've built with these grants?
The, since my role, my time in this role, we haven't, I haven't been here for a complete cycle. However, the initial six elementary schools that had the ACIS grant, their application did come up. Last, year before last, we applied, it was granted again. So basically, what we need to do is we just need to keep applying for it. Now, the funding levels can change a little bit, given the economic circumstances, but as long as we maintain our application, keep it current, then we're funded, and we get that amount for the three years, and then we can reapply. The same thing was true with the Assets Grant at that same time it came up. So we had two schools, one school last year, elementary, that qualified for ACIS, so we have three years, and then that application will come up.
Great. So unless there's any other questions, I'll entertain a motion to adopt this plan as presented.
I move to approve.
Second.
Great, so it's been properly moved and seconded to adopt the 2024-2027 Expanded Learning Opportunities Program Plan as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say no. And the motion passes. Moving on to G, the School Accountability Report Cards.
All right. The School Accountability Report Card is required annually by February 1st. That typically, it's kind of older data. So the data that is presented in the school, the SARC, what we refer to as the SARC, is from 23-24, but it's published in the 24-25 school year. And so it's a little bit old, but it is here. It is a requirement, and we will get those posted on the website.
Great. So unless there's any questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion to approve the School Accountability Report Cards.
I move approval.
I'll second.
Great, so it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the 2023-24 School Accountability Report Cards as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say no. And the motion passes. Moving on to 12 Items for Information, Discussion, and Action by Board. There are none. 13 Resolutions for First Reading. There are none. And then 14 Resolutions for Immediate Actions. We have Item A, Amendment to Resolution 2016-1730, Safe Haven Resolution. So I don't know if staff wants to give a quick summary, or I can do that as well. Yeah, great. Yeah, so this is an amendment to a resolution that we had in 2016, you know, declaring our support for schools to be a safe haven for students. I think, you know, if it's okay with the Board and assuming that we pass this resolution, I think it'd be great to read it out loud immediately upon the passing of it. But I'm wondering if people have any questions or comments. And I'm happy to either read it all, or we can distribute it out a little bit. I don't know how people want to do it best.
I'll put the motion in favor. I move approval, and then let's read it.
Great, so it's been properly moved. Is there a second?
A second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve, to amend Resolution 2016-1730, Safe Haven Resolution. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say no. And the motion passes. So I don't know if people have thoughts on what the best way for us to read this. It would be that first document in there that says Amendment Number One.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and read it then. Because I do think, given the political climate, I guess I'll add an extra thought here, that regardless of how you feel about any kinds of politics or anything, school should be a place where all kids feel safe and all kids can get an education. And whatever battles of values have to happen should be outside of our schools, and here should just be a place where kids get to learn and feel safe. And I think that's exactly what this resolution does. So in support of the rights of all students, a safe haven resolution. Whereas the Antioch Unified School District Board of Education is committed to the success of all students irrespective of their immigration status, ethnicity, race, religion, sexual orientation, ability, sex and gender identity, social, economic status, or ideological beliefs. Whereas the Board of Education embraces the diversity of our students and families, and the rich language and cultural assets they bring to our district, and strongly supports and encourages the participation of all parents and families in our schools. Whereas all students have a right to attend school regardless of their immigration status, the United States Supreme Court in 1982 ruled in Plyler v. Doe that public schools were prohibited from denying student access to elementary and secondary public education based on their immigration status, citing that children have little control over their immigration status, the lifelong harm it would inflict on the child and society itself, and constitutional equal protection rights. Whereas state and federal laws prohibit educational agencies from disclosing personally identifiable student information to law enforcement without the consent of a parent or guardian, a court order, or lawful subpoena, or in the case of a health emergency. Whereas on January 1st, 2018, the California Values Act went into effect, which ensures that no state and local resources are used to assist federal immigration enforcement, and that our schools, our hospitals, and our courthouses are safe spaces for everyone in our community. Whereas reports of potential raids by the U.S. Immigration and Customs Enforcement Office have caused immigrant communities to experience increased levels of fear, the presence of ICE in and around schools would be a severe disruption to the learning environment and educational settings for students and families. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board declares its unequivocal commitment that every school district site shall be a safe and welcoming space for all students to be able to receive a quality education and their families, thereby directing the superintendent with ensuring that families facing deportation or possible deportation receive resources of community-based organizations, legal service organization, and other related information. Be it further resolved, the Board affirms its focus on promoting and elevating tolerance, inclusiveness, and kindness of all students, families, and staff at all district school sites, facilities, and material property. Be it further resolved, the Board via the superintendent shall not allow ICE agents on school district sites, facilities, or material property without receiving prior written approval from the superintendent. Be it further resolved, the superintendent shall direct schools in restricting the sharing of student files that may be used to ascertain the legal or immigration status of students. Be it further resolved, the superintendent shall keep the Board of Education updated on the status of any training or other implementation activities, including plans to assist children whose guardian or family members have been detained. Be it further resolved, the superintendent shall ensure that there are unifying activities occurring within the district to support diversity, inclusion, tolerance, and acceptance over hate speech. Be it further resolved, the superintendent shall ensure that there are adequate training and/or available support, available support for staff that desires more training and/or support in dealing with students who feel unsafe on a campus or are facing possible deportation. Lastly, be it further resolved, the superintendent shall ensure that all parents, guardians, and students will receive notification in multiple languages of this resolution to fully inform families of their rights and the information that they can access in the school district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to 14B, Resolution 2024-2545, authorizing instructors to teach outside of credential authorization for the 2024-25 school year.
Yes, Board, so this is an item that you see quite often at meetings, allowing the teachers listed on Item 14B, single-subject credential holders in the district to teach outside their credential authorization based upon the relevant ed code. The teachers that are listed do hold a credential, and they are serving in a full-time position, but need additional credential authorization for special assignment. This authorizes them for the 24-25 school year.
Great. Unless there's any questions, I will entertain a motion to approve the resolution. Great, so there's a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Great, so it's been properly moved and seconded to approve Resolution 2024-2545, authorizing instructors to teach outside of credential authorization for the 2024-25 school year. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say no. And the motion passes. Moving on to 15 Resolutions for Second Reading and Action. There are none. 16 Board Policies for First Reading. There are none. 17 Board Policies for Second Reading and Action. There are none. 18 Information Items for General Information. We have two items here. We have the Quarterly Report on the Williams Uniform Complaints and the Williams Visit Report. So I'll turn it over to Ms. DeBarra.
All right. So we have four information. The first one is for the period, the quarter, oh, I'm sorry, let me pull it up. There were no complaints found, and the quarter was from October through December 2024. And then the following is the letter that we received from the county following the visits that we, the Williams visits that were conducted back in the beginning of the school year. So if there's any questions, I'm here, happy to answer.
Any questions? Otherwise, we don't have to approve anything here. They're just for information. Great. Moving on to 19 Future Agenda Items from Board Members. Maybe we'll start on my left. Trustee Lathan, any items?
Yes, thank you. Future meetings. The last time, Trustee Cobos Smith brought up having data for the security firm that we're using. So I know that you guys are probably working on that, so having that. But I also suggest maybe emailing the Board members to see what questions we have before you put the presentation together, so that you can answer specific questions. So that's one suggestion that I have. Another, for a different meeting, and you can spread these out, but a community member asks about or talked about suspension rates. And since we know that that is a sore spot in our district, I would love to, either in a Friday update or a public presentation, but to understand the suspension rates per site. I have the general, like when you go on any of the websites, you know, like the dashboard, and another one, I can't think of the name of it, we can get the suspension rates, but it's, I would like to see per site what that looks like, so we can have a better understanding of what support principals need, and teachers as well. And then last year, you all did a really great job with presenting CASP data, so the suspension data can be included in that. But it would be nice to have that again in terms of what the last, have the scores come out yet?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. So if we can have, at least that's my recommend, my question, my ask, but it would be the Board to say, yes, we would like this information.
Just so you know, that that is coming. That's a requirement in February.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Vice President Rocha.
My items are coming up in February. I reviewed the listing.
Perfect. Trustee Cobos Smith.
Yeah, I would actually like to add to what Dr. Jagwart just referenced about the, is it SR Global, I think. I would like actually historical data, because I know we switch companies, and that's actually what stimulated the conversation. So I would like to understand, like, the historical reference on where, where people, these people are, the staff, I guess I'll call them, I don't know, the armed guards. Where are they being utilized? Who are they interfacing with? What kind of altercations are happening that are requiring their presence?
Right. Trustee Brown.
I would think, for me, it would be nice if we can have some updates on parent, teacher, administrative conflict. Because we always hear about they're having a hard time reaching their teachers, but it would be good to know when those items were resolved. So that way it will let the community know that these are just not complaints, but there actually being some type of resolves and some good information is coming out of it. That would be nice to know.
And then moving on to 20 Additional Comments, which exceeded the first 30-minute session limit. There are none. And then 21 Reports, Comments from Board Members. Maybe we'll start from the opposite direction and start with Trustee Brown.
I just really enjoyed going to Deer Valley for the Special Olympics. That was really fun. I actually got a little teary-eyed seeing the collaboration and the excitement and hearing their woos and cheers. And then what really helped, it was really good to see that even the students, them, just pushing them along, some were in wheelchairs, and so they were actually in the game. And the students were really excited to help. I did have a chance to take a tour around the school and talk to some of the house principals. And just hearing the principals talk about the excitement. And then even walking from one section to the school, seeing the students like, no, I got to get to the other side of the gym. It's, I'm up, I'm up. And just the authentic excitement of just being a part of that whole, that whole event was really good. And having the opportunity to meet with Principal Amy, and she gave me a tour around special ed. For those who really know me, special ed is my heart. And so being able to see all the good things they were doing, going to each classroom, she took me to every classroom that they had, and just to even see the students walking up to introduce themselves. They didn't even know who I was, but just to see the collaboration of just, hey, there's a new face on campus, let me just speak. And they were very kind. They were very gentle. Yeah, I really had a good day. I really didn't want to leave, but yeah.
Trustee Cobos Smith.
I also went to the Special Olympics, ran into Dee there. And it was just, the joy was just contagious. And these kids are competitive. Man, they are, and they're good, too. It was like, they were making baskets and like, it was just, it was lovely to see. It was really energizing.
Vice President Rocha.
I think we talked about this at the last meeting, and that was the fact that, oh, that keeps going on, that we were trying to maybe have an advisory body for parents to talk to, having a committee, a committee of special ed. And we had mentioned Dee Dee, Dee Brown is a possibility. I don't know if you want to carry that out or not.
Yeah, I mean, I think we have a special education presentation coming from staff, and maybe that'd be a good thing to have and then talk about that.
We're all carrying committees, but I think that Dee Brown, our board member, Dee Brown doesn't seem to have a committee, and that would be appropriate since that's where the feel of understanding. For me, I was just going to say that I did attend the Martin Luther King event. It was well done, beautiful, a much larger amount. I learned something there, and that was the stepping group, adults. Actually, they have a class where you could come in and learn. But to me, you know what it was? It was a swing. In the old days, we did the swing, and fast. And this is no, this is a slow way for older people to be able to dance. And so I liked that. And then I went to Mission, and they were doing the reading program, and I saw the presentation they were giving parents as to how to help their children with the reading. And I found one lady that could not speak English, and so I was able to interpret. But she was so involved in the materials that she could actually go home and do, and she did know about our center that we have at Antioch Middle School. And I told her that's where you could check out your items. So there was a connection, and I think we brought her into the ELAC as well, which they had on Tuesday. Thank you.
Trustee Lathan.
February 3rd, Monday, February 3rd at 3:00 p.m., so this coming Monday, we have our first City Schools Committee meeting with myself, Trustee Cobos Smith, council member, city council member, Tamisha Torres Walker, and trustee Cobos Smith, council member, city council member, Tamisha Torres Walker, and pro-Tim Mayor Louis Rocha. So I'm really excited about it because this will be our first meeting and we'll do some visioning around what we want in terms of a partnership with the city and of course bringing everything back to the Board. And as we develop our Board goals and get our superintendent, who will also need to be a part of those meetings consistently, it'll be a great opportunity as we're building together with the city.
Mr. President?
Yeah, trustee Cobos Smith.
So back to the special ed committee, I was really glad that trustee Rocha brought it up. I've, I'm noticing that every other committee had two people and I was actually, I just had the opportunity to speak with the teachers and since that was the demographic that I cared for in the hospital, I was actually hoping that Dee and I could be on that committee together.
Yeah, I think that would definitely be an appropriate, yeah, item for us to like discuss and like formally like approve as a board. I think that makes a lot of sense. Yeah, and I think as we get the information from staff on, you know, what's the current situation, I think that'll help that committee define like what is it that we want to tackle? And then we can kind of be really intentional about getting that going in the right direction. But I think, you know, I think we're all in agreement that that seems something that's really important, but we want to make sure that we're also working under like the same shared understanding as well. Great. And maybe I'll just hit some highlights since our last meeting was in December. So I think one of the events that nobody mentioned because it was really close to Christmas, I think most of us were there, but there was a community event at Antioch Middle School where Mr. Fab was there and they had presents for his students and they had a bunch of community resources there. It was really quite a wonderful event. And it was, you know, I think Mr. Fab was at his peak when I was in middle school at Antioch Middle School. So it was very much a very full circle, very nice moment to be there. I also recently in that time completed a certificate in education finance from Georgetown University. I think, oh, thank you. I think, you know, schools are unfortunately headed into a much tougher financial situation and I think, you know, something that I think this entire Board believes in is lifelong learning, including us being an example of that. And so I'm doing my best to make sure that I'm understanding these very complicated things that Liz knows super well and trying to, you know, catch up. I'm, I'm like at the starting line and she's way over there. But, you know, learning, I feel like the more and more I learn, the, the less I actually know and the more I realize, wow, Liz knows so much. But it was, it was a really great experience, you know, and I think, you know, I went out of my way to find my own funding and resources to, to make this happen. And I had a short, a few-day residency program at the Bill Gates Foundation in Seattle and then several weeks of then classes afterwards. I concluded around Christmas time. So I feel a little bit more prepared, but there's still so many challenges when it comes to like finance, especially education finance is just so confusing. And then I do want to highlight the book for today is The World Is Awaiting You by Mary Ann Richmond. I think we're at a time in this school district of a lot of transition and I think both, you know, I think about this in two different ways. I think, one, as, as a school district, I think this is a perfect time to think about and envision what could we become, what could we actually be and to lead from a point of curiosity and a point of like what's possible and where we could be headed rather than thinking so much into the places that we've been because there's a world ahead of us. There's a place we've been, but the world is really ahead of us there. And at the end of the day, when I think, I think about this message of the world awaiting for you, I really think about our students who truly do have the world waiting for us. And I think it's so easy for us to get caught up in, you know, things that we believe in ourselves and things that we want for ourselves or for other people and forget that they really truly have the rest of their lives in front of them and that's really who should we, we should be holding up front and center. I think it's also, again, very beautifully illustrated book. So, yeah, I think I'll end us there and I'm excited, I think, for the work that this Board has ahead of us and for the, the opportunity we have to really define a direction for this school district. So moving on from there, our next board meeting will be on February 19th. And then the one after that will match it nicely because it'll also be March 19th. And then lastly, we have adjournment. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Fourth? Yeah, we have... Fourth. It's February.
Yeah, and so, and then I guess we can also share that, that will, we are anticipating formally scheduling a special board meeting on February 5th to go on the next steps of the superintendent's search firm process. So we do have a, a public piece, meeting to kind of get some of those pieces in place. So if you see that coming along, that's what that discussion's about, is about, you know, getting some of our pieces in place and really hitting the ground running on defining more of the specifics of this search firm process. That's again related to that contract that we approved today with McPherson and Jacobson. Great. So I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move approval.
Great. So it's been moved. Is there a second?
A second.
Great. So it's been properly moved and seconded to adjourn the meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say no. And the motion passes.